Meeting for November 25th, 2014. Commissioners, yesterday morning at our agenda prep, we had discussed perhaps having the draft recommendation for the five-year update for transportation, comprehensive transportation plan going first. But the consultants aren't here yet. So, we're gonna go to the second item first, and then the first item will be second. Got that Ricky? Alright.
I have my mic.
You're on.
Good afternoon Chairman. My name is Dana Johnson with Cobb County Community Development, and I am here to give the second project update for the Dobbins Joint Land Use Study today. I'm gonna do a brief introduction, talk a little bit, and remind everybody about what the Joint Land Use Study is, talk in some detail about the military profile at Dobbins, and then get into some of the compatibility issues that our consultants have been advising on, and then finalize this, and sum this up with some next steps of where we are. Just as an introduction again, the Dobbins Joint Land Use Study is a joint partnership between Dobbins Air Reserve Base, Cobb County, the City of Marietta, and the City of Smyrna. We have hired a firm called Matrix Design Group, which is out of Washington DC, who has done these type of studies all throughout the continental United States. So, we picked one of the best in the business, and we are, you have a number of staff from all of the participants that are involved in the advisory committee and with the policy committees as well. So, a little bit about what a Joint Land Use Study is. This is a collaborative process. It's about getting the different parties together to understand how one impacts the other. Military missions at Dobbins has an impact on the community, and land use decisions that are made have an impact on Dobbins. So, it's about getting an understanding of what everybody needs, and a process to move forward for how we're gonna talk about them and get them solved. That's really what a Joint Land Use Study is. I think it's very important to note that in and of itself, this study is not a regulatory document. We're not gonna, it's not gonna create regulations in and of itself. It'll provide some recommendations that can help you as policymakers make informed decisions, but in and of itself, it is not a regulatory document at all. The main purpose of this is to help protect the safety and health of our community, and help the safety and health of our military personnel who are practicing their missions and using this throughout the world, and using, helping out people throughout the world. So, that is the main focus of this, and why we are looking at this. Just as a reminder of the main area we're talking about, Dobbins Air Reserve Base, our partners, we're looking at about a two-mile radius outside of the base, which is the main area of our focus. We have website, project website, www.dobbinsjlist.com. All project information is contained on this website, and these are the different ways that we're helping inform the community so they can participate and be involved in this particular initiative. Where we are in the process, we are in the middle of Phase Two right now. Phase One was all of our data analysis and interviews. Phase Two dealt with some additional interviewing and developing the issue statements, and the final step will be developing the strategies for consideration, and then preparation of the final report. To get an understanding about the issues, I think it's important to get an understanding of Dobbins and what's happening at Dobbins right now. Dobbins Air Reserve Base is over 1,600-acre facility that has almost a $280 million economic impact on Cobb County. When we talk about Dobbins, it's not the air reserves by themselves. Yes, they are the main host of this facility, but in addition to Dobbins, we have the Georgia National Guard, we have the Navy Operations Support Center, the Marine Corps Reserve Center, other training programs occur there, Lockheed Martin Plant Six, and of course, the Georgia Research Institute, which does a lot of high-level research on radar and drones and other type of pretty secret research happening in cooperation with the military at that particular facility. All of the participants who were involved in this are dealing with different types of aircraft and practice missions with the aircraft. The major aircraft, as most of us know, are the C-130s, the big cargo jets, but there are other type of military aircraft that are being tested and run from Dobbins and the airfield that is contained with that. Right now, the City of Marietta and Cobb County have what's called an ACOO Zone, Air Installation Compatible Use Zone. That basically is based on scientific research of if an airplane is going to have an accident as it relates to its approach and departure areas, these are the areas it would most likely happen. And as such, the City of Marietta and Cobb County have zoning overlay districts to help mitigate land uses in that particular area. So, this is a major part of the study is looking at what's happening in those airport hazard zones right now. And this is, this is kinda difficult to see, but you'll see a number of different lines that go around the runway. These are your noise contours. These are your measurements of decibel levels that are generated by military aircraft as they are doing their approach and departure out of Dobbins Air Reserve Base. That has an impact on businesses and residents of the community, and there are different ways that we can mitigate some of that noise issues through, through different land use controls, and that's what the noise contours show. Imaginary surfaces is probably one of the more difficult things to describe. It has to deal with height around the airfield as it relates to the military training missions. So, your approach and departure areas you'll see in the red coming out of there, that has one context as far as impact on height, but then you'll see the blue and the yellow, which are other areas of imaginary surface. You can think about it like a big stadium, where you have training missions that happen, and I'll use a, I'll use some of that, where you'll see the conical surface in blue going in the middle of that. A lot of times, you'll see the C-130s do tight circles around Dobbins, that's in that outer surface area. Why are these imaginary surfaces important? These are important because there's height impacts in these areas that could impact their training missions. So, we wanna make sure that height around Dobbins is mitigated in a manner that we can ensure that the military training can continue to operate in this, in this particular community. Another thing that we're looking at is what's called BASH in military terms. It's looking at bird and wildlife aircraft strikes. I think the great example happened with this a couple of years ago, where we had the wonderful pilot who saved hundreds, hundreds of people by carefully flying a plane into the Hudson River and saving everybody onboard. What caused that was a goose going into the actual engine. So, this is a flight hazard for aircraft, and so we want to be careful that the land uses that we put in a certain distance to Dobbins are not going to attract the large fowl that are going to have an impact on military missions in this particular area. Lastly, we're looking at FAA Part 77. These are the FAA flight height restrictions as it relates to proximity around any airport, not just any military aircraft, any, any airport in general. So, this, this takes a look at those particular, those particular regulations. And lastly, the range and training areas. There are some detonations that happened at training at Dobbins as part of their training efforts, and these usually occur between 11 to 2:00 in the afternoon, and that's the area that has it, so we wanna think about how that might impact some of the surrounding properties around Dobbins. This just shows kind of a larger scale of how are the flight missions and the, the approach and departure, to where they're going around North Metro and throughout the United States. And finally, just showing some of the partners and where they're located around the airfield with Dobbins. Now, all of this data research that been put together developed a series of issues that are part of the 28 different compatibility issues that are part of this Joint Land Use Study. Each one of these is analyzed, and a listing of, of issues have been developed through the research and public input and interviews that are in the process of being prioritized right now by the consultant as well as, as staff with, with all of the, including partners. Once these priorities are finalized, then they will move forward with the specific strategies that will be developed. One of the things that happened at the public meeting that we had on October 30th is we asked the community to help us in prioritizing some of the issues that are, at are, being proffered forward. Certainly, we're gonna be using our, our consultant's expertise, the data to inform us, but we want the, the public to have an opportunity to help guide that as well, and that, this is an example of an exercise that was done, where we helped to identify issue priorities around some of these. Now, when you see this, a high priority issue is something that we should be considered to be dealt with in one to two-year timeframe. A medium priority is something that we should be trying to mitigate or start within a three to four-year timeframe. A low priority would be something five years or more, and awareness is just something we have to be cognizant of. A good example of an awareness issue would be something like drones. Drones are becoming more used in commercial applications, and the FAA is currently in the process of developing rules and regulations for drones around airfields. So, it's not something that, something we wanna be aware of, and something that there may need to be some few extraction of, but right now, it doesn't fit into any of the current schemes of priorities that are being looked at, as a good example for that. As our next steps, we anticipate having a preliminary draft of this report in December, at which point in time, staffs with all of the partners will review that and, and make recommendations to the consultant. We will be hosting a public open house in this room on January 22nd, at, that starts at six o'clock, 6:30, excuse me, and it'll go till eight. So, anyone from the community who would like to see what the recommended, recommended strategies are, we welcome you to come and take a look, and give us your input on that. We will be doing a, updates with the Board of Commissioners on the last January of, the last meeting in January, which off the top of my head, and I of course did not bring my cellphone with me, I think that's on January the 24th, I don't remember. Your last work, your work session in January, I'll be doing a third, the consultant will be here to give the final recommend, the final strategy update to, to the Board of Commissioners. We'll be going forward to the city councils in the, the end of January, as well as in February, to update the city councils of Marietta and Smyrna on, on strategies, and we'll be asking for final adoption with all of the partners in the February to March timeframe. And with that, Kieran Ba is here, my staff, and would thank her for her diligent effort on this study with us, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have in regard to this, this particular initiative.
Thank you Dana, appreciate the work. This is a project we've been, is ongoing for us for some time now, and we continue to move aggressively and forward with high-level cooperation for all the stakeholders, and I appreciate that support. This is also a project that's funded by the United States government for the most part, which is helpful. This is also a critically important part as we prepare our, our case as discussions around BRAC comes forward. There's only a few that really have these completely finished and updated across the country, if I memory serves me right. I know that everybody tries to do them, but we seem to be one of the guys, again, that have put the energy behind it to get it done, and I know that the feds have been very enthusiastic in our drive to get this completed and get it completed, not only on, quickly, but we're already addressing some of the issues. Some of the issues that are even on the base, that the base is taking into effect, there are some issues as it relates to just making sure that, that the roadway around the base is protected differently for potential gaps. So, there's a lot of things going on now, this Commissioners, I'd ask you to please review this material at your leisure and get up to speed. It is something we will need to go forward on in the dot, in the first quarter, but it's a great piece of work. Any comments or questions for the Board?
I have one.
Yes ma'am.
I attended the second public meeting at Marietta High School, and it was very well attended and very well received, and a lot of community and public input with the issues on the wall and ranking and, and so forth. So, is that, that coupled with the first public meeting that was held, the results of both of those combined meetings be given to us, the results in January meeting?
Yes, what, the, the meeting in January will be the, the kind of, the, kind of the large final presentation that will talk about the entire process, the public involvement that has undertaken as part of this initiative, as well as, and probably most importantly, the strategies that are gonna be recommended to, to proffer forward for consideration by the Board.
Okay, and thank you to you and Kieran and Sharon and the staff in your department for all your hard work on this and, and with our consultant. It's, the meetings have been very well informative.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you sir.
And Commissioners, just for your information, what I've also passed out to you are the actual list of issues that have been identified as part of the strategy. I'd ask you to take a look at this, and if you have any comments, questions, or ideas about prioritization, please let me or Kieran know, and we'll be happy to make sure the consultants are aware of that particular, your, your thoughts.
Thank you sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Massimo, I can't hear you.
Mr. Chair of County Commissioners and County Manager, I apologize. Apparently, there was some confusion with the consultants on the appropriate time to be here. They are en route and will be here shortly. I can go ahead and start the presentation. It's the presentation that we just presented to the stake, or they presented to the Stakeholder Committee, but they should be five or 10 minutes away right now.
Why don't we do this? Since Mr. Hankerson and I have to leave anyway early, why don't we take a recess until they get here, and then reconvene when they get here, if that's okay with the other three Board members that are here today?
Okay.
Is that, is that for today? I thought that was for tonight.
Is that tonight?
Yeah, yeah. Correct. So, yeah, why don't we do that? Let's take a, let's take a recess to be reconvenienced, work session at the time that your consultants get here and can prepare to work forward, so.
And just so that you know, 'cause in case some of you, you said you might have to leave early, what, what we're gonna be doing is an overview of the process and, and the resulting recommendations. Next week, each of the Commissioners will be receiving, and the Chairman will be receiving the actual detailed recommendations report for review.
Thank you.
Alright.
We are recessed.
Welcome back, and I believe next item on the agenda, Ms. Massimo, is to hear from the consultants, so go ahead.
Absolutely, thank you so much Commissioners. We are gonna be presenting the draft recommendations report of the five-year update to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and before Tim Priest from Arcatis, our consultant, the project manager lead on this project comes forward to make that presentation, wanted to remind you and provide a little bit of background. On February the 26th, 26th of 2008, the Board of Commissioners accepted the Cobb County 2030 Comprehensive Transportation Plan document, which resulted from a, a months-long planning effort that, what was prepared with financial participation from the county's six municipalities. On April 12th, or 24th, 2012, the Board authorized the issuance of a request for proposals to secure transportation planning services for the development of a five-year update to that initial Cobb County Transportation Plan that was done in 2030, or done for 2030. The five-year update to the CTP, which includes strategies and recommendations through the year 2040, is required for the county and its municipalities to remain competitive for federal implementation funds, as well as to address growth and other changes that have occurred since acceptance of the 2030 County Transportation Plan. The five-year update to the CTP is identified in the Atlanta Regional Commission's Transportation Improvement Program, and is also a Georgia Department of Transportation project. Also, on April the 24th, 2012, the Board approved a sub-grant agreement with ARC for the County Comprehensive Transportation Plan Assistance Program grant funding for the development of this five-year update to the CTP. In addition, the Board approved six intergovernmental agreements with each municipality within the county for commitments to participate in the funding and development of the five-year plan update. On February 26th, 2013, the Board approved a contract with Arcatis to develop the five-year update to the CTP, and now we have representatives from Arcatis here today to present the Board a summary of the draft recommendations report of the five-year update. It includes preliminary recommendations for strategies, policies, project funding, and priorities, as well as an implementation plan. And the Department will be presenting an agenda item requesting the Board accept the five-year update to the CTP at the January 13th, 2015 Board Meet. In addition, next week, the detailed project list behind the recommendations that we're gonna be presenting in an overview fashion today will also be circulated for the Board to read. Thank you.
Thank you Faye, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Faye.
As you probably recall, when we began this CTP effort, we described our process as ready, set, go, very simple three-step process. Well, we, we spent a lot of time and got ready, we've got set, and we're ready to go. We have, as Faye mentioned, a draft recommendations report, have a number of technical reports. The draft recommendations report is the, sort of the final one, and your staff has it now and is reviewing it, and Faye has asked me to be sure that we forward this all to you all as well by tomorrow. We'll do, be happy to do that. But I'd like to just give you the highlights of the work that we've accomplished since last we spoke to you, and then just a couple of snippets of what to expect in this recommendations report. First, by way of just quick review, all the work that we've done, the projects and strategies we're recommending are geared toward implementing the guiding principles which our Stakeholder Committee identified for us early in the process, maximizing performance, improving access and mobility, making travel safer. And two, that are, that are a bit new to us in the transportation arena, and that is also being, at the same time, being focused on driving economic competitiveness, driving job growth in Cobb County, and also being more cost-effective. So, I hope that you'll see some of those principles carried out in these recommendations. And the process we went through, if you'll think of it like a large funnel, we took all the ideas that we could collect from citizens and from the community, and from previous studies, and the Cobb's own adopted plans. We funneled those into our process, we did some analysis and some modeling of all those ideas, we compared those back to those guiding principles using some performance measures, and then we, we shook that like a sieve, and what fell out the bottom are the ones that we feel do the best job of addressing those guiding principles, and that's what we wanted to recommend to you. Now, some analysis that we've completed since last you heard from us, we did some modeling of travel conditions all the way out to the year 2040. This anticipates the county's continued growth in population and employment, and we tested three future scenarios. Think of them, if you will, as would-if transportation scenarios. The first scenario is what if we don't build anything beyond the ideas we already have funded? The second scenario, we called the status quo scenario, and it essentially tests the notion of what if we just proceed as planned, the status quo, what if we just implement ideas that have been identified previously, they're already in the previous studies, how would the county look, how would that perform? That's about $4 billion of improvements over that period of time, and it does result in not only keeping pace with congestion, but even making a slight improvement to levels of congestion that we see today while accommodating growth. So, that, that's good, but $4 billion is a lot of money. Something else we noticed about the status quo is that over time, although we're doing well with congestion, we're continuing to, to lose our mobility as measured by access to jobs, and we measure that in terms of how many jobs are around a job center within a 30-minute trip or within a 45-minute trip. So, as the county continues to grow, people essentially, on average, are getting further, in terms of time, further from their place of work. So, we wanted to see if we could, we could change that trend at all. So, we also tested what we call the innovation scenario. Now, we took the, the status quo ideas, and we modified those. We removed or modified some of the more expensive roadway projects in order to enhance benefit costs. So, if we thought there was an opportunity to provide similar mobility with, with a different idea, then we tested that, those ideas. We also tested some, some further enhancements to CCT local transit service. Those strategies together did save a little bit of money, about 3.6 billion over that same period of time. These strategies, this package of strategies also did keep pace with congestion fairly well, but the thing that I, I think is encouraging about some of these ideas, and I'll show you a few that worked, and I'll, I'll tell you a couple of ideas that didn't work that we won't recommend, but in addition to keeping pace with congestion and saving money, we did also improve access to jobs. So, we did find that there are some strategies out there that we can, we can focus on, that will not only keep pace with congestion, but help keep our employers closer to their employees. In each of those scenarios, I just want you to know that we, we evaluated a series of quantifiable measures, and those were both scenario-wide as well as project-specific, so that we could evaluate the performance of an individual roadway project that we were testing, or an individual transit project that we were testing. I wanna share just a couple of highlights about each, different types of projects and some things that we learned in this analysis. One thing that we learned is that there are some opportunities to rethink some very lengthy roadway widening projects, in, not in all cases, but in some cases, those can probably be replaced by shorter projects, very targeted projects at key intersections. And the two I put on this slide, 120 Dallas Highway in West Cobb and US 41 Cobb Parkway, and this is specifically referring to the segment in the northern parts of the county. Those segments today are four lanes divided. There is a proposed widening project that's been on the books for many, many years, but it's not planned to happen for some years out in the future. They are both very, very expensive projects. We found in both these cases, if we implement targeted grade separations, we can provide nearly the same level of congestion relief and mobility benefit at, at a substantially lower cost. So, this is one way that we've found to, to make some of our projects more cost-effective through, through innovation. There's a couple of pictures of what those can look like. A grade separation does not have to look like an interchange like we're used to seeing on the interstate system. It can look like one of these. It can fit in in a suburban context, and it can also fit in in an urban context. Wanted to share a few of our findings with regard to transit. In the innovation scenario, we tested not only the, the rapid bus, the BRT Connect Cobb projects on Cobb Parkway, but we also wanted to test making some improvements, some modifications to existing CCT routes to better connect to Connect Cobb. And what we did is we identified, we, we identified which routes best performed today. We increased the service on those, we made those tie into the Connect Cobb corridor very, very well. We also tested a higher level of transit service on Ostell Road from Marietta down to about the vicinity of the East-West Connector. And what we found is the combination of these strategies doubled the daily transit ridership, so that the number of riders we serve today could be doubled with this combination of, of improvements. And, and quite honestly, we didn't really have to work that hard to, to get there, to get to that point, so we're encouraged by that. We think that demonstrates that there's a lot more demand for transit service in the county, if we can find the, the means to, to provide for that. This is one of the strategies in the recommendations report that we think is key to help, helping to serve those job centers, connecting employees into the job centers. That's very important, not only for the workers, but for the employers who are, who are looking to, to come to Cobb. In the area of bicycle and pedestrian facilities, in the short-term recommendations, our recommendations are very specific, they're specific streets and, and the segments of sidewalks, and in the mid and the long term, we trust, we tested over time implementation of the complete network, if you will. Cobb County currently has an adopted trail network that covers the whole county, and to try to, to take that another step further and add some more benefit to that, we did some analysis of that, we identified a priority trail network. So, we essentially took the county's trail network, we identified the segments that, that we recommend should be the priorities, we should focus on implementing those first, and those are largely segments of trail that either extend off an existing trail, or they're within or connecting to an activity center or job center. And this is one of the strategies in the recommendations report that we think ties very closely to economic competitiveness. People want to live in places that are walkable, and employers want to be located where their employees want to live. So, we think this goes beyond just quality of life. People do want to live near having these facilities as a, as a convenience to them. So, what's in the recommendations? Well, it's a, it's a fairly long list of projects and strategies, but I can summarize it this way. We, we've recommended all of the strategies and projects into three time periods, a short-term, a midterm, and a long-term. It includes all those elements in each term, roadway, transit, trail, bicycle, pedestrian. Our draft list is, is pretty well-balanced in terms of the cost. Our draft list uh is, is pretty well balanced in terms of the cost over time. And the short-term component of that, uh in terms of the county's uh projects, uh it is really um tied to the, the new twenty sixteen SLOST program. So that essentially is the, the county's portion of the short-term program. There are projects in all these three terms for the cities, in all of the cities as well, as well as many projects on state routes and projects we believe would be funded by uh state and federal sources. So the uh, the, if I say three-point-six billion, that sounds a little daunting. When you spread it out over time and you look at the time periods and you look at the city and county uh expected portion of those costs, uh we think it's a pretty achievable plan. We think it's certainly, uh certainly financially feasible. One thing that I didn't put on the slide is we did test a few other ideas uh that we think were a little far-reaching. And so we're, we're thinking of also including some recommendations even out beyond this year twenty forty period, even look further into the future. Now, we're going to take this uh, this draft plan. Uh we've been to our um stakeholders last week. Uh we're going to the public on December fourth and ask them what they think about it. And we want to uh hear a lot of questions and inputs, not only about the specific strategies and projects, but also how that plays out over time. You know, one thing I'm interested in is, is the more I look at our, our recommendations is should we be focused on, on any modes differently over the time period? Or should we be focused on any specific part of the county differently over those, those three time period, periods as we look to the future? Right now, I think that the plan is, is, the draft is, is a pretty good balance of spreading cost over time. Uh and it, it does spread our, our, our projects where the needs are today and where we think they will be over those periods of time. In addition to the technical reports uh that I've mentioned, uh we will also do one final, a, a summary report, which will just summarize the whole process and we'll complete that in December. As I mentioned, we'll, um, we'll be back here on December fourth in this very room uh for a, a public meeting. Simultaneously, we are also talking with all of the cities. They're reviewing the recommendations. We're getting their input as well. And tentatively, um we're seeking uh adoption by the cities and by the county in January of twenty fifteen. Sure, um just a quick recap um on the stakeholder effort. We've, we've had a very large and energetic stakeholder committee, which is a really good thing um to me. They've been with us, uh I forget how many meetings now, five or, five or six meetings. Uh and each of those meetings is typically an hour and a half or two hours. So the stakeholders really have given us a lot of their time and input. And uh so I think it's worth uh reminding us of that and also just recognizing them and all the efforts that they've put into this. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Do one of you have any questions? All right, I've got a couple. You mentioned, um and Fay may have to come up and answer this. You mentioned about an adopted trail map. My understanding is that we are still working on the trail map. Is that not correct?
There are some modifications to the trail map that are still being
Right, because it never really has come in front of the board for approval. Is that correct?
It's been posted on
Right, yeah, why don't you come up?
The trail map, as I understand it, Commissioner, has been posted on the website and has been accepted. But I, I believe you're correct, it's never been formally adopted.
Right, okay.
And there are modifications being considered to it.
All right, and the second question is, um you know, this whole process started back in twenty thirteen almost. And um where, how has SunTrust Park and the mixed-use development around it? And in addition, um you know, the county's had almost five-hundred million dollars in new development come forward as a result of that. How did that factor in? Because you were pretty far along in your ready, set, go when those things kind of came along.
That's true. One of the things, great question though, because we've been asked that in the stakeholder meetings. In fact, in the most recent stakeholder meeting, we were asked that again. And one of the things that um is important to note is the way the technical process for determining um the needs and looking at the kinds of things that'll meet those needs is done is by the underlying socioeconomic data, land use data, um all things that already come out of the county, the county's plan, uh development plan and so forth, zoning and all that. Although we could not possibly have known about SunTrust Park, that area where SunTrust Park is locating has always been, um the land use, the underlying land use assumptions there have always been for a higher intensity, high-activity um land use area. And so the traffic projections that are coming off of that will, are not going to change in any substantial way at all with SunTrust Park locating there versus what was projected and used to determine needs here. That said, what will change is the specifics of that site plan for that area will help us when we start doing a more micro level of modeling that looks at real traffic operations, intersection improvements and those kinds of things that are suggested in a, in a, in a, a different kind of level in a, in a long-range CTP. Tim, do you have others?
So just as a specific example, um our forecasts and models that we've been using did not anticipate that remaining undeveloped land as it, as it was until, well, just a few weeks ago. But perhaps anticipated several million square feet of office. So we already anticipated some pretty intense uses there. Now, the exact time of day that traffic will come and go would be different uh with, with the, the stadium as it would for office. But in terms of the overall magnitude of, of trips and travel, we had already been assuming some pretty intense uses in that
Right, because the original zoning on the fifty-two acres, or actually eighty-two acres, was significantly more intense and dense than what's going to be there now.
That's a great point, right.
Um last question is, you mentioned the stakeholders. Um are they listed in the report?
They will be. I'm trying to remember, we did, um, yes, they're in the front. We had acknowledgements.
Okay, all right. Um any other questions? Uh thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe that's all we have, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um then we're adjourned until tonight.